Okay. It really is. The whole seat is moving. Yeah, it's kind of weird. Okay, well, I'm going to be coming to you from a hole in the middle of the dais. And we're going to start, as we always do, with the pledge. It's so weird. With a pledge of allegiance. Matt Strickfaden, will you lead us in the pledge? Thank you.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
How low can I go? We'll see. Mayor, you want to change seats with me? No. Next item on the agenda. No, we're good. Is roll call.
Mayor Barnett.
Here.
Councilmembers Boloware.
Here.
Bridges. Well, Marcus absent. Councilmembers Bruce.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
And Newland.
Here. Okay, next on the agenda is correspondence. Does anybody have any correspondence? Yes.
Don't we have to approve the agenda? A motion for approval of the agenda?
Oh, yes, we do. I didn't see that from my hole in the ground here. Yes, it is. Approval of regular session meeting agenda after roll call. I skipped ahead. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda as written.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Bruce, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Newland and Dr. Massey. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is correspondence. Does anybody have any correspondence to report that we all did not receive? Okay, I will. I did receive a wonderful letter from somebody who is a little frustrated with our RV rules, recreational vehicles, because we only allow them to be in neighborhoods 24 hours before they're being used. And apparently, with the new technology in RVs, it's not long enough to cool the refrigerators and get everything all set. So I have passed that on to the city manager's office and to the planning commission and the city attorney to look at us getting together in the fall and reviewing that ordinance so that we can maybe extend that to 48 or 72 hours, whichever is most reasonable for RV users. We don't want to unduly burden people who are avid campers and RV users. So we will take a look at that. Anybody else? Nope. Okay, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Before we get to the consent agenda, this is a blue slip. It's called a blue slip because it's blue. And the reason why we have a blue slip is if you would like to speak on any item that is not, that is on tonight's agenda, for whatever reason, you can fill out this blue slip and hand it up front, and we will call your name when we get to that agenda item. If you would like to speak in general, not about anything specific or on the agenda, when we get to public questions and comments, we will hear from our county commissioner, Marsha Gershenson, and then we will hear from anybody else who wishes to speak during public comment for a maximum of five minutes, unless you're Pam Gerald, in which case you get three minutes because I know you're going to blow through it with an extra two. So that's why we have the blue slips. So next is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be passed with one motion. There will be no items separated and put aside unless there is a council member or a resident who so requests, in which case we will remove that item from the consent agenda and address it separately. So I will now turn the meeting over to the Mayor Pro Tem, Mary Ellen Newland, to read the consent agenda as published.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Barnett. The consent agenda is published this evening. Number three. Recommend approval of two ground lease agreements and smart cities agreement with SciFi Networks for 15 years with renewals and approval of amendment to IT services inter-local agreement with the city of Farmington for five years with additional renewal terms. This is CMR 72269. Number four. Recommend approval of award on contract for the 13-mile water main extension program project to Bricko Escavating Company LLC in the amount of $761,563. This is CMR 72270. Number five. Recommend approval of a special event permit to the Icecon Temple to hold a festival August 19 through 21st, 2022. Number six. Recommend approval of rescheduling the regular city council meeting of August 8th, 2022 to August 15th and September 26th to September 19th, 2022. Number seven. Recommend approval of request for unemployment under section 10.01A of the city charter for a healthy living coach gym coordinator. Number eight. Acknowledgement of fourth quarter financial summary report and quarterly investment report. Number nine. Recommend approval of the city council study session meeting minutes of July 11th, 2022. And number 10. Recommend approval of the city council regular session meeting minutes of July 11th, 2022.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read by the Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved by Councilmember Noel, seconded by Dr. Massey. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Bruce.
Yes.
Boloware.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett.
Yes. Okay, next item is public questions and comments. We will have Oakland County Commissioner Marsha Gershenson.
Thank you.
You'll be moving away from us, won't you?
I am. I have been redistricted out of Farmington Hills. And as I told Dr. Massey at the parade a week or so ago, I have loved representing Farmington Hills. I was sad 10 years ago when I was redistricted out of Franklin, Southfield Township because my family's there, I lived there. But I've never seen a community that is so responsive to citizens' requests. I think you all do a great job. And I will still be around. I mean, I have to get reelected in November, but I'll always hold a special place for Farmington Hills. So I hope everybody will stay in touch and let me know if I can be of any help. The reason that I'm here is that the Board of Commissioners received a report that there are over 350,000 southeastern Michigan residents that have not completed their secondary education, their college after high school. Now, that number, they have enrolled, they have taken a course, but they haven't graduated. We found that pretty shocking. That's a huge number, and we want to move our state forward and raise the number of residents that graduate with some sort of degree, whether it's technical or from an accredited university. So we have assigned education navigators, and they will be at OCC, OU, Baker, and at many of the Michigan Works offices. And their purpose is to help anybody that's thinking about going back to school to navigate the incredible amount of blue tape, red tape, paperwork, if you have questions about your finances. These navigators are meant to help you. So if anyone out there is thinking about going back to school, please go to our website, oakgov.com, and look up our education navigators and contact one at your convenience. Another program that our Oakland County Treasurer, Robert Wittenberg, has started is the first virtual tax foreclosed treasurer's property auction. So it's the first time this has ever been virtual, and there's over 300 properties. The bidding will end on August 12th. The bidding has already started. So anybody that would like to put a bid on a foreclosed property, you have to register. And if you would like more information about this program, because it's the first time we've done that, that too would be under the Treasurer's Department for oakgov.com. And then I recently received a notice that the Wall Lake Schools are having a job fair on Thursday, August 4th, from 10 to 2:00 in Wall Lake. And there will be walk-in job interviews. And so if anybody's interested in working in that great school district, please make note of Thursday, August 4th. Thank you.
I do want to point out another part of the education piece is the Michigan Works Office has a partner in the state. And if you have not yet gone to college or a training program through a community college and you are 25 years of age or older, they're trying to lower it to 21. I don't know if it's passed the legislature yet. You can attend for free. So if you've never gone to college or a community college and you're 25 or 26 years old or older, you can use this particular program to go to a community college at no cost to you to get a degree, an associate's degree, or to get a training degree from your local community college. So I wanted to point that out. It's something that our state legislature has worked very hard on, and it's a truly spectacular program. Next for public question? Yes.
You might want, the name of it is the Reconnect Program.
Thank you. Reconnect Michigan. Michigan Reconnect. Yeah, I had a brain freeze there. Thank you.
Just want to make sure they can Google it that way and look it up.
Yeah, Michigan Reconnect. The next person who wants to come up is, and you don't have to have a purple slip, a blue slip for this. In fact, if you have a green slip or a yellow slip, it doesn't mean, you don't need a slip. Pam Gerald.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Are we required to say our name?
That's good.
Okay, wonderful. First of all, I want to let the council know and address the fine job that the police chief did when the matter came up about the sheets that were being used on a gun range. I'm concerned about the fact that young Cub Scouts could come to a city and just, for whatever reason arbitrarily, kind of luck up on seeing these sheets. I've been going to the range for 30 years. All of the sheets that I've shot with were Caucasian or Latino. I've never had a problem with that. I never even thought about it. And for this to come up with young Cub Scouts, I'm thinking there's got to be another ulterior motive. And if the only thing that people can see out of everything that the Farmington Hills police do right is the color on a sheet, I got a problem with that. In 2012, and I'm a former resident of Southfield, I still pay taxes in Southfield, I have a home there, but I'm also a resident of this city since 2013, and I do pay my taxes on time. I've got an issue with everything that this city does right, everything that the police department does right, with this one little matter. Now, it just seems to me like there's an ulterior motive coming from somewhere. I do not think little small Cub Scouts was offended by this because they probably don't understand it. This came from an adult. That's my thought. Second of all, I'm in your council study meeting, and I'm hearing the talk about implicit bias, sensitivity training, and everything that you presented on that paper. But I think that this council is missing one serious element. You talked about the statistical data and the fact that you established a dashboard. That's fine and dandy. But out of however many thousands of residents that live in this city, and Farmington Hills is probably now predominantly African-American, most of the citizens in this city probably don't understand statistical data. So to do statistical data and to come up with this fancy campaign about how to relay this, I think you're missing the mark and doing a disservice to the police department here. Your approach, in my opinion, should be more citizen-oriented because it's the citizens that are at the top of the organizational chart. And what needs to happen is a town hall meeting so that you can ask the people that vote and pay taxes here, how do you feel about that? And what do you think should be done in terms of how we can assist our police? Not disparage them, not disparage the color of the sheet. It's serious. We do have a problem with systemic racism in this United States. How can we help the police department? One thing that I think really needs to happen, and it needs to be opened up a little larger, there needs to be a citizens' academy where people in the city can come and be trained by the police on why things are done the way that they're done. I was one of those people in Southfield because I've experienced discrimination. I've studied discrimination. I've studied it in school at the University of Michigan. I started a lot of greater inclusion, diversity, and equity initiatives in the state of Michigan. And I think you got the title wrong. It should be inclusion, equity, and then diversity. Or greater inclusion, diversity, and then equity. Because you can have diversity and have one person. That meets the requirement. But there's still no equity, and that one person is usually not included. So you need to change that around and approach it from a more greater inclusion standpoint. So I'm saying all of that to say that I was one of those people that didn't understand why you would see one African-American in a car and five or six police cars. And in my mind, it always seemed like it was racism until I went through that training with the Southfield Police. And I'm now on the chief's advisory board for 10 years, and it's still going. And what I found out was it's not always race, but it is sometimes. The problem is, we don't know when we're looking at it, why there are seven or eight cop cars. And here's an example. That driver could have a warrant. That driver could have a warrant for attempted murder, for a robbery attempt. It would be a reason why that many police officers would show up. Now, here's another problem that happens.
We don't have another time.
Well, I've been keeping track. It's not quite five minutes yet. I know you wanted me to finish in three. Okay.
But I love you anyway.
Okay. Well, I'll have another opportunity.
Yeah. And I just want to tell you, we do have a police academy, and we are expanding the class offerings for it. And I know you're active, and I'd love to have your participation.
I would love to be a part of it.
Perfect. Okay.
And Mayor?
Yes.
Four of us have attended the academy. And it was like you said, it's a great academy, gives you the rationale of why certain things are done, and it's excellent, everything that you said.
Okay, next, Gerald Mullen. Go ahead, come back up. God, you two are adorable. Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity, Madam Mayor, to finish. Okay, wonderful. So if I could just continue where I stopped off at, you know, the police department, they do a lot of things right. And what we need to understand is times have changed when it comes to police departments. Our police officers, and probably 90% of them, take their oath to protect and serve very serious. There are no more normal police stops. Every time a police officer pulls somebody over, they respond to a domestic violence issue or any other kind of crime, they're risking their lives. And we should be tuned into the fact that whenever you hear that siren, know that someone in public safety is risking their lives for you, a family member, or a neighbor, and that means something. So here's what I'm thinking needs to happen. And you were scratching the surface in your study. We need a national registry for cops that fall below taking their oath to protect and serve seriously. We know there are some bad cops. We know that there are some cop killers, and we've seen it, we watch the news. Why not celebrate the 95% of the cops that do a good job by giving them their just due in terms of a cost of living increase and making sure that their pension is paid up? And for those bad cops, let's establish a national registry, that we can put those bad cops in that registry so that they can't go to another jurisdiction and do policing. Those are some things that we need to work on. But the residents have got to be more involved. If you're going to put out an analytical dashboard, you've got to explain those figures. Because most African-Americans, all they know is every time you turn the news on, we're getting killed. They're kicking our doors down and going in there. And that has to be addressed. And I take my hat off to my chief here in this city because I saw the meeting, whether it was the truth or not, he owned it, he provided transparency, and he said, we're going to work on it. I was disappointed that it made national news because it's not a national issue. I've gone to the, through the police simulation thing. The guys was white on the sheets, and I still have my sheet. Somebody put that in those kids' head. And what we don't want to do is scream racism for issues that are not racism. And when it is racism, we want to address it from a systemic standpoint and not make everything about a lawsuit, not make everything about a press conference to get money, to get a paycheck. We do have a problem with some police officers. We do have a systemic racism issue, but let's work with the police. And if you really want to show how much you love your police, don't make them go to arbitration for their just due cost of living increase that we know they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. See, that was 3 minutes 22 seconds. I love you, Ms. Gerald. Next is anybody who wants to come up? Yes.
Good evening, honorable body, Mayor. I'm Dr. Wendy Webster Jackson, candidate for 18th District, Michigan State House of Representatives. I'm coming here because I do want to see what's going on in Farmington because that's one of the districts I would be representing if elected. I just wanted to say one thing with Ms. Gerald said, and I said it previously when I was here a couple last month. I love Farmington and Southfield Police. I would be amiss to say anything was wrong. I have not had any negative experiences. All I had is had our positive experiences. Your guys are the best, Southfield are the best. They come in honestly, two minutes or less in any situation, they're great. But I want to address the issue that several residents have come to me, and they said that they have a problem with the deer. And I know you probably hear about them. And I must address it because if I hear about it, I have to see what's going on. Now, you know, we have over 2 million whitetail deer in Michigan, and certain areas do calls. They do a biannual call. They do it in Lansing. They do it in Ann Arbor area. So different areas, they have not really done it here. I don't know if that's something that is on the agenda to talk about in the future, but I feel that could be beneficial. Because as you know, the deer come in, you cannot keep your flowers, you cannot have a garden, and we need to eat and enjoy our homes, but they want to come and take over. I think it needs to be something done more permanently with them. We all love to live with nature. I'm not saying to take care of everyone, but all the deer. But if you can, look into a biannual call. And what happens with the meat is they have certain processors that you can go, and it gives, they sell it or donate it to different kitchens that they could provide meat for people who don't have much money. So if that's something that you can look into, I don't know how far you are, I'm just starting to come to these meetings, but I think that can actually take care of three things. One, to reduce the numbers of a pest that is causing monetary damages to people. Because if you put $500 worth of flowers and in a week the deer come, that's a monetary loss to you. Second, as you know, the deer also carry the deer ticks that can cause Lyme disease. So that is a public health issue also, so something we want to do. Although the numbers in southeastern Michigan are not great, but that can change at any time. So that's another thing. And three, if you do the call, that will be helping to feed people who, in this day and age, when we have inflation, that the food, cost of beef is very high. If it can be an alternative food source, I think that's something that should be looked at. So I think that's an issue that needs to be addressed, and thank you very much. So just looking for a call possibly, work with Michigan State University, and they arrange the calls for that.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to meet you. And right now, I'm going to ask, is Joe Valentine here?
I think he's cleaning up. He's here, though.
He's, our Assistant City Manager, Joe Valentine, has been working with Southfield and a lot of other communities on a regional approach to deer management. So when he comes in the room, if you're going to stay for a little while, we'll make sure that you guys get together, and he can fill you in on where we are and what we're doing so far and where we have come around with the, it's understudy. So it is a major problem. So thank you. And again, nice to meet you. Next item on the agenda, is there anybody else?
I like that look. And you keep getting lower and lower.
I think I'm about as low as I can go now.
Low, low, low. Hello, Council, Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney, one of my favorites, Pam, hello. It is such a pleasure to be here tonight. I wanted to thank all of you for the best 10 months of my life in supporting me as a council member here. I enjoyed and loved working on behalf of the city, working with all of you with the absolute best counsel that I could ever imagine. You guys are wonderful. So I'll give you a big round of applause for that. My name is Matthew Strickfaden, better known as Oliver Strickfaden's uncle, and I live on Brittany Street. I'm here to advocate on behalf of one of my neighbors. She's an elderly woman who lost her husband four years ago. She's about 85 years old. She's been a resident and taxpayer for over 60 years, and she was a teacher for 40 years. Now, she has, or her property abuts Heritage Park. Oh, and I did want to say that Gary and many people are kind of working on a solution, but because I don't have one yet, I'm here, I'm impatient, you guys all know me. So she has a low spot in Heritage Park, which her property abuts. And every time it rains, the city, or the water from the subdivision right behind pours down the hill, goes into this low spot, ultimately floods her septic field and her house. She's, this has been going on for more than eight years. My brother, she and I have tried to work with the county, with the city, to do something. And it's always, well, I'll give you the reasons why we don't do that kind of thing. If we did it for her, we'd have to do it for everybody. We don't have the equipment, we don't have the manpower, it's not something we do. So when you hear that enough, you just get the sense that it's easier to blow Matt Strickfaden off than to do something. So I, Miranda, bless her heart, she came out along with Tim, and I met Fred from FDM, the person who's putting in the water system in the subdivision. And they came and asked for some more gets from me about the easements on my property, which I gladly allowed. And I told them I would be happy to let them do anything they needed to do to get this thing to work. That's when I asked Miranda about what was going on with poor Mrs. Moat's drainage problem. And she said, well, you know, we're willing to do the ROW right-of-way easement, and they pay for it and expedite it and send out a survey crew to stake the elevations. And then Fred said, look, I'll send a trenching crew out there. I'll trench it for you. All I need is for you guys to pay for the materials. So I got the subdivision folks together, and 10 people said we'd split the cost of doing that. So they're splitting the cost of doing all the six-inch pipe, and it's an elegant, simple, efficient solution to her problem that will constantly keep this wet spot, low spot, drained right into the city storm system. It's beautiful. So I asked Miranda because he said he needed five yards of pea stone. If you don't know what pea stone is, stone about the size of P, a pea. And so they trench out 18 inches deep, they put six inches of pea stone, they put a sock, very corrugated perforated pipe in, they put a really nice cleanout in the middle, a drain on each end. It's just elegant, simple, really beautiful and effective. It will last all of our lifetimes and all of our kids' lifetime, never have to be dealt with again. And so I said to Miranda, because Fred said, do you have pea stone available? We need five yards. This is $200 city cost, $300 delivered. It's not a big deal. But I started to dig in my heels because I'm that way. After putting so much time and energy in, you just thought, yo, city of Farmington Hills wants to do this. Yo, why can't you drop this pea stone off? You have it sitting at the DPW. And I get the, we don't want to be involved with the And I get the, we don't want to be involved with the project. Again, if, I've heard these many times, if we do it for her, we have to do it for everybody. Well, freak yeah, you should do it for everybody. If your city property is abutting her house and causing a problem to her, yes, you should do it. And you should do it for everybody that has that kind of circumstance. And if you don't have the equipment, great, I'm a contractor. I've made the arrangement. They're going to do this work on Wednesday, and I'll pay for it out of my pocket. But you know what? It just seems like with all of you folks up there, I know how every one of you cares about individual people who have problems. This lady's been there for 60 years, and taxpayer and suffering for the last 28 with this, 28 years. And we're, yeah, I'm being a weeder, because I'm saying, I think the city should just dump five yards of peystone. I'll take care of everything else. They're taking care of the permits. Thank you, Miranda. And you just get the, I don't know, I don't know, no, no. I got list of text messages, no, 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 no. And you know what, City Council? If there's a group that will advocate for the little person, it's you. And I hope in this case, you will find it in your heart and find a way to do what City Council can do and get five yards of peystone dropped off there. And thank you all for being the best council ever. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, ma'am.
How do we address this peystone issue when the drainage is coming from the park?
Well, the first I heard about this was this morning. So as I told Mr. Strickfaden before the meeting, I'm looking into it and probably have a solution for him tomorrow or an answer for him. So he's preempting my ability to give a decision, but that's fine.
For that, I do apologize.
Yeah. So I'll have a discussion with my staff and probably take care of it, but I would have at least appreciated the opportunity to follow up with my staff. So thank you.
Okay. Well, we will follow up and get back to you ASAP. Yes?
Yeah, one question. I know that a couple of weeks ago, a couple of council meetings ago, there was a discussion about some fallen trees in the Rouge River. I think Randy, I mean, Dr. Massey brought that up. I think it was near your home, correct?
Yes.
Has that been?
That's in the entire Rouge River. There's at least 14 major trees that have fallen into the river, and then dozens or scores of other ones. And it would, Joe, Joe is wonderful, Joe Valentine. He gives me updates basically every two weeks at the IEESC meetings, tells me what's going on. And I guess it's in the process of still getting bids. I'm hoping that they'll get bids and approve a bid before it gets to be winter time and they can't go back there again. But it would be nice if there was an update to share today. Gary, do you have anything?
I know we've been looking at Woody Debris Management as an organization, and you know, there are some areas where we want to touch and some areas that we don't. It's been a few weeks since we've circled back. Joe, I don't know if you've got any more information, but you know, we certainly have looked at it. DPW has developed that Woody Debris Management and how we get in. The big issue, as you all know, is that the vast majority of the Rouge River is not public property, it's on private property. And so when we do Woody Debris Management in Heritage Park or in other riverine areas, it's where we have those park areas and where it won't be damaging or redirect the water course in any way that would be adverse to the MDNR or Eagle. So I think that's, that's the information I have unless Mr. Valentine has more information.
Well, we kind of need to hear from Mr. Valentine. And also, I want to put him in touch with our candidate that is here from Southfield about the deer issue.
And Mayor Burnett, I would like to apologize personally again to Gary. This isn't his fault if he just got the information today. This has been ongoing for many, many years, and I-
Welcome back to the open meeting portion of the City of Farmington Hills regularly scheduled council meeting for July 25th, 2022. We are now back in open session for the purposes of adjournment.
And Mayor?
Yes.
I'd move we adjourn.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Massey, support by Councilmember Noel, Councilmember Bolowear, Councilmember Bruce, and Mayor Pro Tem Newland. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, we are now adjourned. Good night, Farmington Hills.